For the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick bit of information in the case of emergency, emergency exits in the back and on the sides. If there is an emergency, we will let you know and get you out safely to the best of our abilities. Have a couple of approvals. The first is the Board of Education meeting minutes from February 26th of 2018. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Emily, in a second.
Second.
Jen, all in favor? That is everyone.
We have everybody.
Let's go. We also have a federal single audit, FYE, for fiscal year ending June 30th, 17. If I could get a motion to approve.
In a second.
That was Jen and Barry, all in favor. That is everybody. There's three FYIs, Budget Appropriation Report for the General School Lunch and Special Aid Funds, Budget Transfers, Revenue Status Report as of 2/28/18. And we now move to the Treasurer's Report for January 2018. If I could please get a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Emily, in a second. Bill, all in favor? That is everybody. There's also warrants that were certified on 2/28/18. If I could get a motion to approve.
Motion.
Barry, in a second.
I'll say.
Xavier, all in favor? That is everybody. Moving on to Board Member Communications and Announcements. Does anything, anybody have anything they'd like to share?
I have a couple. I went to Washington Primary to read for PARP on Friday to a classroom of incredibly well-behaved and attentive fourth graders. It was really wonderful.
I got the kindergarteners.
Me too.
I got third grade.
I got this note out. I got third grade.
So anyways, that was great. And then I'm sure that the superintendent will have more details, but he and I attended. South Huntington School District hosted a legislative breakfast on Saturday morning at their administrative office with, there was Elwood, Harborfields, Huntington, South Huntington.
That's it.
And that's it. A few board members, superintendents, and some other administrative folks. And then there were some representatives from the town. Chad Lupinacci was there, Joan Seargle, Mark Cuthbertson. County was Susan Berlin, Tom Donnelly, and
Doc.
And Doc came, right? And then from the state was Carl Marcelino and John Flanagan. The primary topic was the conversation around school safety. I have to say that I was really impressed with how well-informed our superintendents were and had to sort of educate our electeds on some of the laws surrounding what school districts can and can't do in terms of school safety plans and specific to particular schools. But, so there was a lot of conversation around that. My biggest takeaway, which I was very grateful to all the superintendents also for really talking about this, was the push to the county folks to make sure that our community resource officers, not just for our school district, I mean, we have Officer Drew, but other districts who don't even have or have less than what we have, that all school districts should have that resource. That it's not just a, in terms of crime prevention, but also in terms of relationship building and trust building with the students in the schools. We all know what Drew has done since he's been here. So I think that that message was sent loud and clear to the county representatives. I was less inspired by anything that was impacted by, on our electeds in the state. And that's all I'm gonna say. I'm gonna let the superintendent fill us in when he talks. So, you know, it was fine. I've been doing this for 12 years, of these breakfasts, and they get a little frustrating sometimes. But I think it was really great that South Huntington pulled it all together. But we really didn't get that much farther beyond safety. We talked a little bit about some other things, but really that was the primary conversation.
The one problem with the way that event is set up, and I've actually voiced this before, but it is a great way to get everybody in the room, but when you have state, county, and town officials in the room at the same time, there are different issues that pertain to each. So when you're speaking about state aid, for example, the county and the town have nothing, nothing to offer there.
Yeah, I think that they
But school safety was an issue that all three levels of government could participate actively in conversation. And that was another reason, I think, why it lasted as long as it did.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks for representing us. It was nice of you guys to go.
I was quiet.
Grab yourself.
It were bagels.
Bagels.
Anybody else?
I have something. Just this past week, I attended the Finley Honors Concert at the high school. And the student musicians were extraordinary. They were great, as usual. At the very end, I'm sure some of you saw it on the website, the symphonic band and orchestra got together and did Bohemian Rhapsody, and it was excellent. So congratulations to all those students. They worked really hard. They get up early in the morning to go to those practices for the honors music programs. And they deserve a lot of credit because they did a great job. Yeah, it was wonderful, wasn't it? Yep. All right, that's all I have.
I have a couple things.
Yep.
Hopefully I won't forget anything. At the end of February, I attended the celebration of the end of Black History Month at the high school. And there were tons of performances. It was really, really entertaining. I wished I could've stayed the whole time. I'd pick up a child, of course, somewhere else, like I'm always running. But it was, it was a really great night. And then also, I got to attend K Factor, which was also another extravaganza of talent. I mean, one of, every single, there wasn't a clunker in the show. It was really, it was really fun. And I hear that they raised a lot of money for, to support families with cancer, so that's always fabulous. And then I wanted to remind everybody that in almost two weeks, on the 23rd and the 24th, the high school's drama club will be presenting their Rodgers and Hammerstein Cinderella. So don't forget to come to that. And I'm pretty sure I forgot something, but we'll just leave it at that.
We have Heffy coming up too.
Heffy on Thursday and March Madness on Friday.
Ah, that was it.
I just have a quick little booster. I'll put my booster hat on for a moment just to give an update. I had mentioned a meeting or two before that we were bringing back the golf outing and that we have more details on that. The date is June 25th. That's the Monday after school ends. And it's going to be at the Huntington Crescent Club. It's $180 per golfer. And it'll include a continental breakfast and a reception afterwards. So anybody who might be interested in that, you can contact Tim Pillion or anyone really, any of us in the booster club can get you more information on that. And also, they'll be coming out, our, the information, we'll be doing the booster camps again this summer, but we are reducing the cost to try and make it more where as many people who are interested in attending, they're not priced out, it's, Michelle, 80 or 85? 85 for the week. I think last year they were like 150. So we're looking to do it more where we can just not necessarily, you know, have the high price, just have more kids involved because that's really what we want. That's about it. Oh, and on Thursday, I will be attending a mental health seminar at the Fox Hollow in Syosset. So I'm looking forward to bringing some information about that at our next meeting.
Easy day Thursday, huh?
Yeah, I might run late.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Nope, okay. Moving on to the superintendent.
I'll first address the issue with, well, not that it's an issue, but the update on the calendar for the current school year. I did send out a letter today. Hopefully you had a chance to look at it. We are required by state regulation to include 180 school days in the calendar. We actually have 180 plus two. That includes conference days. And the first two days that we lost in January were automatically put back. They're actually labeled as school days in the calendar, which makes it very easy in terms of its interpretation. We then had the day last week, and I am sure the weather forecasters are completely off-base for tomorrow. But the bottom line is if we end up with a total of four days of closure, the two days have already been put back, we would bypass the other two days. If we should have a fifth, if two more closures occur, we have no choice but to put a day back in. And that day would be earmarked for Friday, April 6th, which is the end of the upcoming spring break. And that again is, is important because we need to make sure that we receive our full package of state aid for contingency purposes. Now, a lot of schools did not put in, put back any days at this point because they don't have, they have more days in their calendar to start with. They're at a crossroads. And I know I had a number of conversations today with superintendents in surrounding districts that are scrambling around and may lose that Friday, April 6th, based on something that may or may not happen tomorrow. But I think the information should be clear. If there are any questions on it, please don't hesitate to let me know. I will clarify for you. Thursday, Barry mentioned that she's going to that mental health symposium on Thursday. There is also a follow-up meeting. Suffolk County Superintendents Association has Steve Vallone coming in and a number of county officials to talk about some of the initiatives that are happening countywide in terms of a potential for countywide school safety plans and also an initiative that is going to potentially allow the Suffolk County Police Department to access the security cameras that are set up at various school buildings across the county, should the cameras be advanced enough to handle that, which ours in fact are. That's something that will be discussed in greater detail. It's not been done yet, but it is something, again, that follows the incident in Parkland, Florida, a couple of weeks ago. And obviously, a lot of attention has been paid to the aftermath and school safety concerns. And we did present on school safety on the 26th of February, the meeting right after the break. But I just want to reiterate that we didn't wake up on February 15th and for the first time start to think about school safety and security. But an incident like this happens, and it makes everybody look again and rethink and review and pull their district safety committees back together to just make sure that everything is in good working order. It has been a very tense time in schools across the nation. But I do want to throw out there, we are, we are actively and in an ongoing manner looking at everything we do, safety and security first. There's terrific things going on in the school district, but if those two items are not addressed first and foremost, the other things really are not, are not that important. So please understand that we are, we are exercising our due diligence and will continue to do so. I was up, and the county association I'll mention has put out a call for action, every level of government, to address this in a manner that helps all schools, not just on Long Island, in New York State, but across the country. I was up in Albany a couple, at the beginning of last week, and weekend and last week, a lot of discussion about safety initiatives there, particularly in the House of Delegates meeting, which I attended. It was also a time for the, let's get back to education for a minute, the time for the state ed officials to roll out new documents related to the transition to the next generation standards, which will eventually replace the Common Core over the next couple of years. There is now a timeline, a roadmap, and a series of crosswalks that connect the current standards, the Common Core, to the next generation standards and show the differences. They are accessible publicly. If you go to the State Education Department website, the first link you see is the New York State Next Generation Standards. If you click on that, you can see every crosswalk, every grade level. They exist for every grade level for both ELA and math. And if you're interested, if you're a parent and you have a child going into third grade next year, it might be something to look at. The assessments won't change for the next couple of years, but it gives you a sense of what type of transition that we will be involved, involved in as a district in terms of curriculum writing, mapping and writing. Those that have students in third or fourth grade, the letters from Mrs. Morrow and Mrs. Rothel went out in terms of placements for Jack Abrams and Woodhull for next year. And all choices honored, which makes life very easy. And a couple of other things just to mention. Very prestigious community service award that, that really should get a little bit of recognition here. The Prudential Spirit of Community Award is one of the top-notch community service awards. It's a nation, a national award. And I'd like to commend Quinn Blackburn for winning that at Huntington High School. It's a terrific honor for me. And I will also add, it was a very busy weekend in Huntington. We hosted, and actually weren't supposed to initially, but it seems that a neighboring district couldn't, couldn't hold it this weekend. We had the Division III on Saturday night, Division I and II on Sunday afternoon. And later in the afternoon, Skamia concerts. It is always a pleasure to host all county musicians from across the area. And they put on a great show. And it's really, as much as Skamia thanked us, I thanked them for giving us the opportunity to host it. It went off without a hitch, and I think people were really pleased with what Huntington had to offer in terms of its abilities to host, its ability to host the event. And we also had our two bands, our Blue Devil marching band and our Finley band participate in. It was actually a very nice day, a little crisp when you started walking, the Town of Huntington, St. Patrick's Day Parade. I would like that kind of crowd at our homecoming parade. For the most part, that kind of crowd, that volume of crowd, let me
We should have the hiberniums do our PR.
There was a lot of people, a lot of people out there supporting, you know, all the, the people who were walking, marching, et cetera. It was actually a lot of fun.
It was fun.
It was fun. And I'd also like to just throw out there that the volume of, winter season athletics just ended, the volume of scholar athletes, terrific. These kids are not only doing it on the field, in the court, on the court, wherever it is they're participating in their athletic event, they're also doing it in the classroom, first and foremost. So congratulations to dozens of student athletes, student scholar athletes in Huntington.
That's it?
That's it, thank you.
That takes us to our first public commentary of the evening. Public commentary will last for a total of 30 minutes. And will be, each speaker is limited to three minutes per person. Comments are limited to, I'm sorry, you may not make comments regarding any staff member or student. But you also may come up and discuss anything on items for discussion in action or anything else after those topics have been covered. If anyone would like to come to the podium right now, you may do so. Just come on.
Good evening. My name is James Graeber. I'm a resident of the district, a teacher in the district, and the president of the Teachers Association. I just wanted to speak tonight about some of the events that are taking place in response to the Parkland shooting. And, you know, March 14th, of course, there's a nationwide walkout that is taking place in schools throughout the country in response to these shootings. And historically, people under the age of 25 have, are underrepresented in the political process. Do not participate in the numbers that they should. And this may be a watershed moment in that history. And while we cannot participate actively in that, in that walkout, I do think it's appropriate to show our tacit approval of their, finding their political voice with this. My understanding is that the color orange has been selected as a symbolic measure of support for this. And so I think that it would be appropriate for the Huntington community to wear orange on Wednesday in response to that, to show that these students have a voice that should be heard. They have a message that needs to be addressed and that we support them in that mission. In addition, on March 24th, there is a Nationwide March for Our Lives. It's taking place in Washington, DC, but there are many sister marches that are taking place as well throughout the country. It's an incredible map, actually, when you see all of the different locations that are taking place. And we actually have an event locally that will be taking place in Heckshire Park. So the March for Our Lives Long Island event will be there. On Saturday, March 24th, starting at 11:00 AM and lasting until about 1:00 PM. I am incredibly impressed by this process. This is entirely student organized. Students from 57 high schools across Long Island have participated in this, have organized, have arranged for the permits for this, have done everything that they need to do this. And again, it's a, it's an opportunity for their voices to be heard and for all of us to come together as a community to demand the changes that need to take place. So I would ask everybody to make some time in your schedule, if you can, on March 24th as well. Thank you.
Thanks, James.
Add a brief piece to that, that several students were featured this evening on News 12. They came to my office and to the high school building, basically to get some feedback on how we will treat any activism on Wednesday, March 14th. And I would like to give a great deal of credit to the kids and to the administration for working together to come up with a plan that, in my mind, appeals to the interests and perspectives of all students in the, in the building. Regardless of where you exist on a belief continuum, I believe this will address every perspective and every degree of, of the need to express that we should, we should be accommodating.
And do you want to mention tomorrow night also?
Yeah, that's, thank you for mentioning that. Tomorrow has me a little twisted because I'm just looking at the sky. But we do have a National Issues Forum scheduled tomorrow night at the high school. And this is, again, another, you know, people don't give, and James alluded to this, young people enough credit for, for their beliefs. And I have to tell you, and I'll be the first to, to throw it out there, that you listen to the kids speak about the current climate nationally and locally. Sometimes they make a lot more sense than the adults, and this is no exception. And their passion, their beliefs, their opinions, they have to matter. And they have to be given the, the just respect that, that they deserve. And they have done a terrific job working with the administration to really plan out what they feel needs to be done in a manner that, again, not just expresses one set of opinions, but respects the beliefs of all. And this National Issues Forum is part of that. It'll be student-led, it'll be moderated by faculty members as well. And it'll be a chance for people to express themselves regardless of what their opinions are and to talk about the issues that we face as a country at this point. And it's very important, if you're not put in a situation where you can voice your opinions or express yourselves, these feelings get bottled up and sometimes turn into counterproductive situations. And our goal, our kids' goals, is not to let that happen amongst each other, so.
If there is a snow day tomorrow.
I don't.
I'm just saying.
He just said, "Just don't."
The forum will be rescheduled.
The forum, we're looking, we're gonna reschedule it. It's just a matter of the problem, and I was speaking with, with Mr. Cusack about this. There are so few dates on the calendar, but we will find one. Obviously, the idea was to build this around the national date, but we will find an alternative date because they've done a lot of hefty planning on this, and we want to make sure that the opportunity is not taken, taken away.
Okay. If no one else is coming up to the mic, we'll move on to our first item for discussion in action.
Okay, so this is really our fourth budget presentation. And we're now getting into the nitty-gritty associated with specific cost centers, codes, expenditures. Tonight is no different. We're gonna focus specifically on 9,000 code, 9,000 series codes, which are employee benefits. And we're also gonna focus some time this evening on capital expenditures. And hopefully by the end of this evening, we'll have, we'll at least be close to an agreement on where a capital proposition might land. So just a bit of review here in terms of our tax levy limit. You saw an article appear over the weekend in Newsday, which showed projected tax levies for school districts across Long Island. Unfortunately, what Newsday continues to do is take the tax levy limit calculations and use those tax levy limits as projected tax levy, adopted, projected levies that the boards will adopt. It's not necessarily the case. So what they showed for Huntington was the 3.14%, which is our limit. That doesn't necessarily mean that's where the board is going to land. So I want to make that clear because, again, when they print those tables, I don't care what table they print, whether it be on finances or something else educational, there's always some caveat there that needs to be clarified. So our tax levy limit is 3.14%. We did submit before March 1st, so it is on record. Why is it as high as it is this year? First of all, we're starting with a 2% CPI, and actually, it's 2.13%, but the max is two. And the other two factors that contribute to that 3.14% are the tax-based growth factor, which is 0.6% higher than the previous year. And that 566-420 carryover, that number represents how far below the tax levy limit we were last year, which is the board's responsible financing. And again, a budget that was able to do everything we needed it to do, that's not common. Most school districts are at or close. We were that far under, and that, that is, well, we do things the right way. Anything above that 108, 108.24 would require a 60% supermajority approval. And as I stated last week, I and/or the board at this point are looking anywhere near going above that 3.14%, and we're gonna see where the next couple of weeks take us. Now, I do want to mention, because there was some reporting done at, on the conversations that we had at the last meeting, and I do want to mention that there are a couple of things that if they didn't happen for next year, we wouldn't be in the predicament that we're in in terms of being well beyond that 3.14% to start. We are facing significant health insurance cost increases. And those rates are set by Niship, by Empire. That's what we have, and we've got to incorporate them into the costs. There's nobody in district that caused that. That is simply an outside entity establishing its rates. For the first year in several years, TRS contributions on the part of the district, they're going up. Again, this is a legislative construct. There is nobody in this district that has caused that, or any other district for that matter, but we do have to pay into it. And there's a reason that the TRS was set up to begin with years and years ago. We've experienced a number of years where that, that rate has gone down. This is the first year in a while that it has gone up. Most importantly, right now in our budget, we're actually looking at not only no additional state aid, our state aid total has gone down. We got 22,000 and change in foundation aid additional. Our local shared deduct, which reflects certain costs, certain high-cost, excess-cost-type situations, tuitions, et cetera, is 40,000 lower. So we're looking at a net state aid total that's less than the current school year. That's not helping us either. So if you take out the 1.5 million in health insurance, the additional 800,000 in TRS, and then the no state aid, put this all together, and that deficit is erased very quickly. All right? Salaries are a piece of this. It is not a major piece of this. I didn't include it on the slide because relative to the other pieces here, it's not as significant.
And the state aid number could change a little.
State aid number could change a little. You've heard some, some chatter and some banter that the legislature is going to step in and possibly infuse some more funding. How exactly that's distributed or whether it's gonna be additional at all remains to be seen. So we are working off the numbers that we have from the executive budget proposal at this point. I am not counting, it'll be a gift.
You do that anyway.
Absolutely. Okay, so tonight, we're gonna specifically look at, last week, we looked at the 1,000 central admin codes. We looked at 5,000 transportation. Tonight, we're gonna focus a little time on the 9,000 series, benefits primarily, debt service and transfers less significantly. And as you can see here, we're looking at, for next year, almost 37 million of 100, about $130 million budget. So that's not an insignificant total. And we are looking at a percent change from budget-to-budget perspective of just over 6.5%. And you will see that health insurance is a big component of that. But let's look at it line by line. ERS, Employees Retirement System. And here, we're talking about our non-instructional civil service employees. The Employees Retirement System, it is not a school district construct. It is a legislative construct. They are determining the rate. All the fiscal years are different, so that carries over from one school year to the next, which complicates matters even further. The expected employer contribution rate for 1819 is 14.9%. That's actually a good thing because the current year is 15.3%. That mitigates a little of the TRS increase. So just to give you a sense there, from 1999 to 2018-19, where those rates have fallen. So again, we are looking at a slight decrease from the current year to next year. And that translates, there it is graphically. Okay? And that said, this translates to about a $225,000, almost a 10% savings from the current school year to 2018-19. TRS, this is our instructional, our certificated staff. A percentage of every certificated employee's salary is contributed to the system. For next year, that rate is 10.63%. So whatever the certificated salary is, 10.63% of that number is going to go toward TRS employer contribution. And this gives you quite the history, and you'll see some real significant bouncing up and down here over the years. We reached as high recently in 1415 at 17.53%. That's where it really becomes unmanageable. And then it, as you can see, 1516, 1617, 1718, we were fortunate enough And then it, as you can see, 1516, 1617, 1718, we were fortunate enough from year to year to experience decreases in this particular expense, and unfortunately for next year, it's going to go up, and that's gonna cost us, and there it is graphically, and that little spike at the end is gonna cost us over $827,000.
Is there a trend that it lags behind the stock market, so like?
Well. It is, it is, it is the market, it is their investments, and they project based on where they believe their investment, the return on their investments are going to be. So they did expect, I believe, a fall from about 7.5% to 7.25%, and that accounts for, that's the decrease in the rate of, the rate of return on investment has contributed to the increase in the contribution rate. It is well-funded, it is responsibly funded, but that's a great question, and I can't speak all the way back to 1987, but when you see those ups and downs, it does reflect what the, what the construct believes its rate of return on investment will be for the coming year. So a little decline, which means a little spike. All right, and there it is in dollars and cents, and that's a significant, $827,000 is a significant piece of the increase. And again, that is not a school district creation, but we've got to, we've gotta do what every other school district in New York State has to do. Social Security, FICA Medicare, 7.65% of current salaries. And again, the increase here reflects slightly increased salaries for 201819, as per collective bargaining agreements. Workers' compensation. We do have a reserve fund that we use to cover these costs, and any monies that are not spent from that reserve remain in the fund for future claims. And we have had the, and we know we've been talking about some workers' compensation cases, but we do believe that our budget number this year is sufficient to cover any expenditures and may actually work in our favor for next year, but there is no, no increase projected. Life insurance for specific bargaining units. Again, this, these are pieces of collective bargaining agreements, and we are looking at, just based on rates, a potential increase of 2%, which is very close to where the CPI fell. Unemployment insurance. Again, this, this is very hard to predict, and there are cases that we argue against. There are situations where we actually have to appear in hop, in hop-hog to address some of the issues that come up with this, but this, you know, we just wanna have enough in the code to cover the anticipated expenses, and like I said, this could be well down, it could be well up, depending on what happens in a given year. But if you look at where we are now, we, 201617 actual, actuals don't really tell us much about what could happen the following year, so we're hovering around that 110, 120 on an annual basis, and that just hedges some, knowing that there are some financial difficulties, and there may be some people who, who are not with us, maybe in the substitute ranks next year, we just wanna make sure that we have these costs covered. Disability insurance, this hasn't been in the presentation for the past couple of years, but, and I think that's primarily because the costs are somewhat static from year to year, but each unit does have disability-related insurance. There is an employer contribution involved, all units are eligible, and it hasn't increased in a number of years, and that's why it hasn't been built in here, but you should see it as an expense. And then you get to the big nut here, the health and dental. Every unit has something built in. The rates are set by NYSIP. Some units have dental coverage, and it's not the same from unit to unit, and then you have the Medicare Part B reimbursement payments to retired employees, and the explanations go along with that. And as you can see here, the big increase, big chunk of that 1.7 million is the 11% increase for 2018. And because this works on a calendar-year basis, we don't even know where the 19 rates are going to fall at this point, and the last thing we wanna do is fall short here. The other piece of this, dental, has increased by 5%. Much smaller, much, much smaller contribution to begin with, but that contributes to the overall increase here as well. So as I mentioned, any deficit between where we are now and where we'd like to be, this is, I'm gonna say, the most, without a doubt, the most significant percentage of that deficit.
Is it only 5% of the last year's contribution?
Current year. From current year to next year, we're anticipating a 5% increase. So we actually carved, you'll notice, if you look at last week's numbers, we pulled back a little bit on the health insurance, calculated it down to the penny, and I'm gonna show you those changes from last week in a second, but we actually had to up this a little bit, because the dental insurance we had mapped in at 3, the rates just came in between the last meeting and this meeting, and we, 5.
Oh, well, they went up from 3.5.
From 3%, from a 3% increase to a 5% increase.
In the first draft, you had 5%.
In the first draft, we had built in, Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, we had built in 3%.
Yes.
Then the rates, the actual rates came in at 5%.
5%? I wonder if they went up 5% or if it went up to 5%.
No, no, they, whatever the current number is, we had projected a 3% increase, and it came in at a 5% increase. Right, which always, which always happens.
Yes.
All right, our EAP program, and more significantly, non-elected 403B contributions, which are technically, that's how we, we have collectively bargained our separation payments for instructional retirees. So this is often determined by how many retirements occur in a given year, and we've certainly had enough to cover what we need to here, and there is no increase anticipated from the current year to the following year. Debt service, two things included here, and actually, I could've taken that line out altogether, but I just wanna reiterate, reemphasize that the district did pay off a 2006 energy performance contract two years ago, so the debt service attached to that is completely gone. The difference that you see in total to total is a reduction from 20 million in tax anticipation notes to 18 in 1718, and a slight decrease from this year to next year. And the rates have been very favorable for us, because our bond rating is so high. So we are actually selling, selling notes to cover the period where we have not yet received taxes, the town collects our taxes, they give them to us on a schedule that doesn't really coincide with the school year, so we have to sell these notes in order to cover our payments before the first set of tax payments come in. And again, our rates continue to be favorable, because our financial position and the amount of debt we have is very, very low. All right, inter-fund transfers, not a lot of time should be spent here. These are really pass-throughs when we have money moved from the general fund to specific purpose funds. This does include the debt service on the 2006 bond, which the principal is fairly consistent, actually, the principal repayment is actually fairly consistent, actually goes up from year to year, but the interest is obviously going down, because we are in the waning years of that, of that amortization schedule. School food service transfer there is included, as well as a special aid fund, and this has been a focus of attention, because in the past extended year, we've paid 20, the state has paid 80. One of the proposals in the executive budget proposal has a new formula in place where it's probably going to adjust that ratio, and it's going to cost districts more than the 20 that they have been paying most districts. And I imagine, because we are looked at as a mid-to-high wealth district, that's not going to impact us positively. But based on the movement of funds, and again, this really is not an actual savings, it's just a matter of how much money we are transferring from general to special fund, and we don't have to do as much of that this year. The monies themselves are not, they should not be looked at as savings, because if they're not coming into these special funds, they're remaining in the general fund. So that is a little bit misleading, but it's part of the budget process. And then just to bring it back to where we started, again, most of that 2 point, almost $2.3 million is in the form of health, well, health insurance. Health and dental was 1.7 of that 2.3. So to highlight some of the changes that we made since the last meeting, again, trying to anticipate where the 2019 health insurance rate is going to be, it's almost like throwing darts at a target behind you while you're blindfolded, but we were, as diligent as we could be, trying to calculate this out to the penny, and pulled $500,000 from that line, and that will help us considerably. Special education health services, we believe we had overbudgeted a little bit there. We did pull some buildings and grounds equipment and supplies after conversations with, with Mr. Austin. We did have a tech coordinator, we've spoken about this before, built in. This would not be in our mind the year to put that in. We pulled back on some of the business contracted services, and part of that, I believe, is because we now have on-staff a, an assistant business manager, and that will allow us to pull back a little bit for reasons that we'll talk about in a couple of minutes. We're pulling back on the repair reserve contribution. We don't think we're gonna need that, at least for the time being. The increase in dental insurance, again, not a lot, because it's a much smaller, not to start with, but there's your 5% of the difference between the 3% and the 5%. And we also pulled back a little bit on instructional software. So our budget bottom-line number is going to be over a million less than it was on February 26th, and that's what you're seeing here. So without going through this number by number, at the last meeting, that red number in the lower right was over 2.6, and now it's at 1, just, just under 1.6, which makes sense based on the slide I just showed you.
Jim, can you mention again, under the special ed health services savings, what, how that is, where the?
That's primarily related to out-of-district placements, and just going through with a fine-tooth comb, looking at exactly where those placements are now, which is hard to do, and also anticipate where they're going to be next year. And you can see there's, there's a fairly pinpointed calculation there. We felt that we could remove that volume based on where we expect placements to be next year. It's not always based on what you have now, it's based on what you anticipate for next year, and based on some changes that are going to occur between this year and next. We felt we could do that.
Got it, thank you.
Services like nursing services.
Yeah. Okay?
Yep, thanks.
Okay, so we are now looking at, and again, this, this, if it's going to be reported on, and this is a working draft, so by the time this process finishes, this is not where the recommendation is going to come from me to the board, that this is where we should land. This is a process. It takes weeks to get through this process. I think people report accurately, under the majority of circumstances, but if you just take a number off a slide and throw it into an article in a local paper, and there's no explanation behind it, as far as this is a working draft, it really is misleading. This is where we are today. A budget-to-budget increase of 3.99% as opposed to where we were last week, which was well over 4, and I believe we were 5.6 something with respect to the tax rate increase. That has come down to 4.65% at this point, and it's, I can only imagine it's going to go down further from here. Don't wanna spend a lot of time on a contingency budget, but if we were to end up in a situation where a budget were voted down, had to adopt a contingency budget, we'd have to take not 1.59 million, but almost 5 million out of the budget, which includes all the equipment, and another almost 4.2 million, and that's where it gets, it's, the pain is, the pain is a lot harder to certainly tolerate. And there it is in the same type of format that you saw draft versus tax levy before. So it's a difference between 4.877 to remove as opposed to 1.59. Okay, this is also the meeting where we talk about where we'd like to be in terms of capital project proposals. And I will reemphasize, as I do every year, that what we're proposing here, what we're going to propose here or discuss here has absolutely nothing to do with the tax levy or the tax rate. We are looking at using money that already exists within our capital reserve funds, which Mrs. Acker will reemphasize four or 500 times. I'm sorry.
Where do we get this number?
Oh, wait, hang on. I just made a mistake. I would like to correct my mistake. I just introduced Mrs. Acker. I'd actually like to scratch that from the record, because she's not Mrs. Acker, she is now Dr. Acker.
Congratulations.
Working with her for so long.
Shall rank you now?
What's that?
Shall rank you now?
No, he's Dr. Pulaski.
All right, good evening, everybody. So this is the time in the presentation that we'd like to go over the capital proposal, project proposals for this year's propositions. But before we do that, we're gonna talk a little bit about where the proposed projects come from. Every year, we get a five-year, not every year, every five years, we get a five-year analysis from the architects that we have to submit to the state. We are in year three of the current five-year plan. All of these projects will be funded from the 2013 and/or the 2017 capital reserve funds that we have in place. There's a voter-approved cap on these fund contributions. And there is a new fund under consideration, I think Mr. Plansky will speak about it a little bit more, but we have an existing repair reserve that was created specifically for the turf field, and as accounting rules do not allow you to do that type of activity out of a repair reserve, we have to set up a new capital reserve and transfer the funds from the repair reserve into the new capital reserve, but you'll talk about it a little bit more. Okay, before we move forward, let's see what happened this past summer. And the biggest project that we had going on, which was a huge project, was the air conditioning at the Huntington High School. So on the left picture there, there's a small air conditioning unit that weighs 50 tons, and we have two of them on the roof. The conduit for the electrical, just showing a few slides of this, this is a major job. George Austin was on-site during the entire project, and it really was a tremendous undertaking, but it came out amazing. Then the next slide is electrical service, and the last thing you see is a curb that will sit on the roof that the AC units sit on. And then the small units up there with their wiring, this middle side is the units almost completed. The upper right hand was where they were trying to get the switchgear down the stairs, that was quite a feat. I think they defied all laws of physics during that. And then the last picture is the completed switchgear that's located in the, at the basement of the high school. So that was the biggest project we had going on, and we had one additional project where in the high school on the second floor, we replaced 23 doors. When we say hardening doors is an example of the door, the smaller window pane, and you can lock from the inside and the outside. So when we refer to the hardening of doors for security purposes, this is an example of what the door would look like compared to what's there already. This coming summer is going to be incredibly busy throughout the district. I, you're gonna have to get Rolla Skates George, because, you know, he's the project manager for all these projects, and a lot of our projects finally got approved at the state. So before, I just wanna give you a review of what's gonna happen this summer. So this summer at the Huntington High School, we have the, a lot of the ADA work coming in, so we have the compliant ramps at the locker room and the gym area, and then we have the locker room restrooms by the girls' locker room. We have the compliant wheelchair lift by the cafeteria, and foundation repairs down by room 014. And the main electrical panel was completed during the air conditioning project, because we needed that panel for the air conditioning, so that has already been completed. Over at Finley Middle School, we have the compliant ramps all around the entire building. The compliant restrooms in what they known as the blue floor, when you come into the lobby area, those are the restrooms that are going to be updated, as well as fire-rated doors at the top of the stairs. So you're gonna see every building's had a little something going on. Then we have at Woodhull Intermediate going on, we have compliant ramps in the back of the building, and then the compli, the restrooms and office counter. The restrooms are for when you first walk into the main lobby, and the office counter is in the main office. More ADA compliance at Jack Abrams. We have two ramps going in the courtyard, ADA compliant restrooms, the two restrooms that are out here in the lobby area, as well as one over in the admin section. We have, the fire-rated door is going to be put in, those are put in the hallways, we don't have enough of them. Those are the hallway doors that automatically shut, which will be near the main office and the gym, no, near the cafeteria, as well as the main office door being replaced. The wireless clock system, we were able to do ourselves in-house last year, so that has been completed. And then Flower Hill with our compliant, the third-grade wing, they'll have their restrooms redone, as well as the nurse's office, and then their door replacement is in the main office and custodial area, and this is one of the buildings that we are using our $100,000 project that was voter-approved in last year's general fund for transfer to capital, where we get the aid immediately during the following year. So that $100,000 project will be used to replace 25 of the classroom doors at Flower Hill to make them hardened. They are more, you know, the secure doors that were, those doors right now are original to the building, so we will be hardening the doors at Flower Hill with that project money.
Okay.
Yes.
If, if we completed a project out of the repair, with repair money, then the money stays, that was earmarked for it from the reserve fund stays in the?
In the reserve, exactly, exactly. Those monies were used from the general fund, and then those monies remain in the reserve. We did a little bit, a lot of work on that, actually, this year, trying to identify, if you look at that five-year plan that you have, if you look at the end of five years, the $33 million-plus dollars that it would take to complete, we've worked really hard to identify the project so we could possibly pull out and do in-house. And we do get a lot, sometimes going off the BOSI's bids, get it better pricing than than we, than we would through the architects, so we try and do as much of that as we can. we, than we would through the architects, so we try and do as much of that as we can. All right, and Jefferson, we are, again, doing ADA compliant ramps, that they're off the back of the building, the compliant restroom is the nurses' office, and this will be our first security vestibule that we will be putting into place this summer. So Jefferson is the first of the four primaries. Southdown and Woodhull are up at the state right now, the intermediate school, Woodhull, and then, part of tonight's presentation, you'll see that we have Flower Hill and Washington proposed for getting their security vestibules.
To add to that, Jack Abrams already has one.
Yep.
Finley already has one. Huntington High School has one.
We're doing in-house.
It's being heat added and taken care of in-house.
To be double locked.
Yes, so, you know, George was able to look at it, say we could do 100, even though it was in the capital plan for the Huntington vestibule, we could, the high school, we could do it in-house, and that is being done this school year, if I'm not mistaken?
I would agree with that.
Yeah, so we're going to have the...
Because George likes to say yes.
What?
Because George likes to say yes.
It's for the kids, he'll say yes. Okay, Southdown Primary School, we have, again, that third grade wing, as well as the nurses' office restrooms, and they are the other building that are having the 25 classroom doors done, through the $100,000 project. So it's going to be a very busy summer, so if you see, you know, lots of action, and get a little bit, you know, some camps have been moved around a little bit, so just make sure you look at the schedule where everything is happening this summer. Washington is getting, again, that's the nurses' office, having the ADA compliance at the nurses' office in Washington.
Kathy?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
When you say 25 doors are being replaced, how many classroom doors are there within the building? Are there all 25 doors?
George, I think that's the end time.
There's 25,000 doors in the building, so instead of concentrating on that.
Right, just the classroom doors. That's what I was curious about, thank you.
We've had a lot of conversation about the door hardening piece, and things that we can't do, and things that we can do, and again, I know it's, it can become a little bit of a hardship during the early part of the year and later part of the year, but teachers, and I will tell you, I've been in buildings, reading, when I go into a building, and I'm going to observe a teacher or visit a teacher, those doors are locked.
Yeah.
This door hardening makes it a lot simpler for a teacher to do what he or she needs to do, in terms of making sure that that room is secure. You can't use those magnetic strips, they're being used in a lot of buildings, they are not approved by the fire inspector under any circumstance, and what that does, it's supposed to, this is kind of multiple times where you put that strip between the door and the, the door hardware, so that the latch can't connect, and then if something happens in the building, you can remove that strip really quickly. They're not, once you put that strip in, the doors are no longer fire.
Right.
Because that's been suggested by a couple people, we are, we are not...
Continually check with OSHA, and they were absolutely not. Okay, so, two more projects that are going on this summer. Last year, these were included in our 2017 proposal, and most of those projects are all up at the state, but we put two in as fast-tracked as emergency projects, and that would be the boiler replacement here in Jack Abrams, as well as the Washington Primary School, the roof replacement. So all these projects are going on this summer. Again, let's hope for good weather, and materials being delivered on time, so, those are always important aspects. So that's what's happening this summer. So now it's time to determine what would go in our capital propositions this year. I'm going to present several options to the board, superintendent. I worked closely with George Austin, between his construction experience, as well as his knowledge of our buildings, and the architect's input, we've come up with several recommendations, and the board, again, can make a determination which way we'd like to go. So option one. Option one, we kind of took an approach of a little bit of something for everyone. Again, each building receiving a little bit of some of the capital work that is in the capital plan, scheduled for 1819, according to the architects. The Flower Hill roof replacement, we're going to be putting a roof on every year until we get our roofs replaced. All of our roofs need to be replaced, they're all over 25 years old. The Flower Hill security vestibule, in Jefferson, some tile replacement in five bathrooms, the Washington security vestibule, the Jack Abrams, a water booster system, the water pressure in this building is very slow, so with the increase of students in this building, and the increase, potential increase in flushing, we need that water pressure to make sure that the pipes are clear and they don't get clogged. So that is the purpose for the, the water...
Is that what you have?
No, moving on.
You want the details?
No, I think you don't.
We don't want a demonstration, we don't want details. Okay, at Woodhull, repair repaved the parking lot and curbs. Again, I'm going to explain this option A a little bit before I go over to B, but in order to get that site work, we received state aid on it, we had to add something inside the building, so we added in the tile replacement for 12 bathrooms. If you just did the site work alone, repaved the parking lot, you did not receive state aid on that. You have to connect it to something going on inside the building. So they're a package deal. Well, you can have the tile replacement without the parking lot, but you can't have the parking lot without the tile.
Kathy?
Yes.
With Woodhull, when we're talking about repave, or repair repave, does, I know that parking there can sometimes get very crowded, and people do park up on the dirt area. Are we looking at all, or maybe George knows, to expand that parking lot, or make it bigger, or?
I don't, I don't think, I don't know, you, but the plans came today.
There's 10,000 to make that parking lot.
Yeah.
So we're going to do that, or probably make that part of the area, just for 10,000 to make that parking lot.
Okay.
And that price came in originally, if you look, we, we, every year, we go back to the architect and make them update prices. So if you look at the original five-year plan that we received two and a half years ago, that parking lot was priced, if I'm not mistaken, five and a quarter? And so when we asked for the new prices for this year, as if we were going to do it, and what the current costs are, it went up to $705,000. So that was, that's what's happened with a lot of our prices, and, you know, when we go out to put this plan together, we have to get updated prices, and a lot of this stuff has gone up dramatically.
Is that why I'm having a memory that I feel like we did it, because we talked about it, but then we didn't do it? Is that...
No, this is new, yeah, this is...
So the last time it was paved was a long time ago.
I guess. I know high school was paved, Jack was paved, Jefferson was paved recently.
I think you're thinking of Jack Abrams.
Those three.
I think, I think, I think, I think, Finley and...
I'm sorry?
No, I think she's thinking of Jack Abrams.
Yeah, Jack was done two years ago.
The water booster system proposed for Jack Abrams, is that in any way connected to, or would it be connected to the boiler replacement?
No, we can't really connect them two ways, but it's standing in the same area, but it's two, two separate things, so we gave them a idea, but we wouldn't have enough of them for boiler replacement to subsidize that.
Is there any benefit in doing them both at the same time, or?
No, no, I would like to, when I spoke to Kathy about this, I would like to see what I can do in-house, and see what I can do with that, because I think we can reduce that.
Gotcha.
Given that this is, excuse me, given that this is one of our newer buildings, I guess I'm kind of curious as to why the, we're having water system issues here. Is it that, or is it just the neighborhood pressure is lower than the volume of this building needs?
So, we make that water tower across the street, the pressure very low, we need to, we got a test of valves every year, we make a pipeline at the end of the water, that didn't change until they got to put the OTC valves outside, which you can see the hill out there, that gives us a little pressure, 50 PS on it. So that's about pressure from water towers that we had, down to where we are now, and that's what we're having a problem with. This building originally had a water booth tank that went out into the ground, and it was condemned, because you can't do that with a steel tank. So without that, our PSC valve would have been fine, but the state mandated us put in, and now we have an issue that, we have issues there for water, so that's why we're going to have to do something. But I think that's really important, it's an idea, because I don't think it's as bad as they think it is.
Well, I guess, my, my direct question, is there a way that we can redirect this at who is it, Suffolk County Water Authority, saying you're not giving us enough pressure to start?
I did, I brought it to them, they said, you're on your own. We're, we're only responsible for giving water to the beginning of that valve, and that meets the criteria. I did bring it to them, yes, we must have some issues about that.
Thanks.
I even tried to get the thing out of the valve.
Is that what you said, you even tried?
Sorry.
What'd you say, you even tried to get them to...
I tried to ask them to split the cost with us, but they said, you know, we're only responsible for point A, after that, it's all given.
And that's been tested, point A is confirmed, that they're doing what they're supposed to do.
I just wanted to mention that, at the live study practice on Saturday, one of the issues that we cannot, specifically about the smart schools on that, but also in terms of projects, and getting approval, and the lab at SED, that came up, every single superintendent in the room was talking about the fact that, the hard feelings of the tenants, comments stood out, because it's taking so long for things to get approved, and what you're typing that happy, so by the time that the approval comes through, we have to readjust budget-wise, because costs have changed. And there, apparently, there's only two people, there are only two people in that particular office.
And he was focused on the fact that one of them had been on a term.
Yeah, he should have stopped saying that. But nonetheless, it sounds as though that's a real issue, and the electeds in the room did say that they were submitting some kind of a letter.
The, the problem there is, it's not under their jurisdiction, this is the Office of the Facility, Office of the Facility Planning, State Education Department Office. The comment about the Smart Schools Bond Act is, you know, and I believe the young superintendent made it very clear, that the Smart Schools Bond Act was put in place to help districts transition from paper-based testing to computer-based testing, and there was a caveat put in there, that you could use some of the Smart Schools bond monies for security-related expenditures. Now we're in a climate where nobody's really talking about conversion from paper to computer, they're thinking about what else can we do in terms of, of shoring up our security measures? And the problem is, we have the first piece of our Smart Schools Bond Act money approved, that's 400,000 and change, it has taken some districts two years to get their projects approved, and I have people coming up to me all the time, saying, well, you know, you approved that security vestibule, where is the money, when is it happening? And I, and I explain to them, there could be a two-year lag between voter approval and when the project is actually done, and both the Senator finding, and Senator Austin may know, suggested that they were going to go with that as, as heavy-handedly as possible. And it makes, it makes a tremendous difference. Your same projects up here, that were approved by the voters in 2016, now 2018, we could wait 20 years for some H2Ms to be replaced.
That's why when I say here that we fast-tracked, there's something new out there to help with some projects, but they're going to get just as clogged as everything else is, once everybody catches on to it, and there's a slight cost to the district. But the Jack Abrams boiler, we went through, there's a way now to go through BOSI's, and then they have a third-party architect, so they fast-track your project. So the boiler replacement, we put in through the BOSI's, when did we put that in, like three months ago?
Three months ago, yes.
And now it's already being reviewed. So we will have this done this summer. So we were able to fast-track it as an emergency project, go through that third-party architect process, that's brand-new, but they're going to get overburdened soon.
They're a little too many projects.
Exactly. Not really, but it's, it's, there's a cost to the district as well, you have to pay, so you don't want to do it for, say, your roof, a $1.5 million project before an $800,000 project. It's worth, and then plus the timing of the boiler is a lot more difficult than the timing of some of the other projects. So something that needs to be done, and there's a timing factor, we tried it, and we found out today that, just today, that we're being moved on to review. And so we should be in good shape to get this done this summer. So which is, you know, but it is a mess. Some people I know with smart schools have been waiting three years, the reason ours got approved so quickly is we broke it apart. If it's just devices, you, there was a fast-track approval. Anything that had to do with capital, such as a security vestibule, and even cameras, because that's infrastructure with wiring and cabling, that went on the same slow piece as all of these capital projects. So by separating out your devices versus your capital projects, you at least got your devices on a timely, timely basis.
What about situations where there's a complete failure of a boiler? Is there a mechanism where we can replace it, or do we have to go through this and wait as well?
Oh, no, there is a mechanism, and I, and again, I'm going to turn to George to speak to the emergency projects, because he's been here a long time.
Yeah, we can fast-track emergency projects, approve that emergency project, get voter approval, and submit the gas. And we can, when we go for boiler replacement, so that's sort of a fast-track, where it's not really costing us nothing, a little bit given there, or we're trying to push that so fast, because we can't use the lead times for months before a boiler, and we have to be ready for September, so it begins off in June, you have to share all your equipment, so that you're ready to open when it comes September.
Should we expect some savings, maybe some efficiency in these new boilers?
I think we will save, exactly, I don't know really what it relates it, but we should see savings.
And in these proposals that we get from our, from our architects, what percentage do they make off of these proposals? Is there a fee for what they do?
Yeah, they get an architectural fee, they're at 4, 6% right now?
6.25%, most of the guys are 7 and 8, not the most...
Yeah, they brought it down for us.
Did BBS bring ours down a couple years?
Because they are conditioning.
They, they made a bust.
Yeah.
And we make buses by all. I'll also mention that, that when you're now taking care of a project that was approved back in 2016, there's a very good chance that the price is not the same as it was then. It could be lower if the board offered the money.
But you're not going back out to bid? We can't go out to bid until we, this, this isn't, this is the architect doing an estimate.
It's an estimate.
We can't go out to bid now until the state approves it. Now, we're, we're going to go out to bid now, for all the projects we're doing this summer. So we're hoping they come in around the estimate of that the architects are giving us. And when it's a competitive world, and there's not a lot of work, they do, but right now there's a lot of work out there, and that's why we, you know, the prices get driven, because in times, you know, are good, they don't have to come in as low, because there's plenty of work, so that, that's a concern.
Do we RFE the architects as well?
Do we what?
Do we send out RFEs for the architects, for what they do, or is this just some, I, I think there's somebody we do every year, we rehire them?
We just, we knew them, right, we have not gone out for an RFP with our contract for...
And is that the set price?
It's a professional service, we're allowed to renew, I'm sorry.
Is that the set price, that 6 or 7%, that's the same amount every, for, for all architects?
They work with us, and they actually, like George, as they are the cheapest, like they're giving us a really good rate, because we kind of were upset with them and almost won RFP.
You approved BBS for ATD or Reorg?
At the Reorg, yeah, in July.
There, there are only a couple of, much like, much like school attorneys.
Like school attorneys and accountants, yeah.
On a school level, it's a basis, BBS is one, H2M is another, there are probably a couple others smaller, but the cost efficiencies aren't with the smaller firms. But I will tell you, when, and Kathy knows, when my head is ready to explode, as opposed to picking up the pieces of it, they allow me to then, and, and, and lower the rate, and that's also, and George is constantly up top of this kind of thing, and, and, and we need to have some cost efficiencies that a lot of other districts have.
Oh, yeah. He's, he's a really good shopper. Keep in mind, he is, he always has the, the district's dime in, in mind, and, okay, so, any more questions before I move on to the large group instruction at Finley? In that area, the tile and the seats need to be replaced. And then finally, on, on option A, we have the roll-up doors, these are located in the back of what everybody may know as Brian Reynolds' old classroom, or, which is now the district woodshop, which is where, also where the marching band brings their equipment through, and those doors really need, you know, they're, they're in severely need of being replaced. So this is option A, which is a little bit at every building, and also, if you, if you do a lot of capital work, and the, the voters are approving on it, and they're not seeing the capital work, we don't know if that, you know, impacts them at all, so that's why the, the Woodhull repair, the parking lot in curbs was put up here at about 750,000, but on project B, you have to choose between a boiler or the parking lot. You know, we could, we need boilers, we need roofs, but we also want to make sure our district looks nice. So again, that's where the, this is a Chinese menu, where you can just pick and choose and move around. So option B, well, let me just go back here to option A, so it came to 3,466,000 to do all of those projects, which would come out of our capital reserves. And again, you can pick and choose. On option B and C, we kind of kept the projects that we felt were critical, that we didn't really think that we could do without, so as you see in option B, we have the roof at Flower Hill, the two security vestibules, the large group instruction, we probably could get a year or two out of that, because we just recently put carpet over that, but But that is definitely something that's going to need to be done. And then the boilers at Woodhull. So again, this is all in eighteen nineteen, so it's-
And the boilers there could be replaced with the parking lots in Curbs and the bathrooms.
Exactly.
But how long is the boiler?
Boiler seems more-
Well, we'd have to push the boiler out for another, till next year. I'd be standing in front of you saying, Woodhull boilers. Yeah, George said we could probably get another year out of them. Um, so it would have to be what kind of direction you wanna take. Do you wanna do the roofs, the boilers and get the inside stuff?
So right now, we have about eight point three million in capital reserves. Is that about right?
Yeah, there's a, a slide here, but yes, that's about what we have.
And how much do we expect to replenish this year?
It's hard to say, it's fund balance. So it's a tight budget year.
This is a much tighter budget than we have.
We do have a very, it's a tight budget year and, and next year will be extremely tight budget year based on what you're seeing.
Projects last year.
I'm sorry?
Four, four point five, the best we can do.
Yeah.
How much do you foresee us putting away towards capital reserve funds this year?
Actually, it's too early in the year to have the fund balance because there's a lot of things that we haven't done. I, I would like to, as we have in the past, put in two million. I don't know if we'll be there. I really honestly don't.
All of these projects, though, have to get approved by the state, right?
Oh, yeah.
So there's still that lag of time. Now, once they approve it, it doesn't necessarily mean that if it's approved, it has to be done like that year that you expected it to be done, right?
Right.
So it could pass on to another year even though it's approved. So there's not a downside-
But those monies out of the reserve are kind of reserved.
They're reserved for these projects.
Right, exactly.
But it doesn't necessarily mean that those projects have to begin when you're say, say they're going to begin.
My, my concern there is when the voters approve these projects, I, I would have to feel it was their expectation that we set, that us, we start them as soon as we can. Um, and I'm already answering questions about, well, where are those vestibules that were approved these days? Well, didn't we approve those in the twenty sixteen budget? I can answer the question, but I wouldn't wanna be in a position where we chose to hold off on the project that was approved in next year and wait up.
And also you take the risk that you won't be able to afford it if, once the price goes up.
Yeah.
Or often enough the press is going to go on the money.
Well, that's, and that's, that was the issue with the high school air conditioning. Right. Is it got so held up. So people, people were expecting it the next year and-
If we go to Flower Hill, the roof is one point five six. That's the same size as Washington and Redone and we've got it one point seven.
Right. That, the rooms went up.
But again, by the time we get that up the roof, it's gonna be up there.
See, and I understand what we're trying to do, add this, add this, add this, but what we're trying to do here is avoid, at least in the short term, the need for a bond. So we are actively working to use our capital reserves and not saddle the district with additional debt. And, you know, we're, we're mapping out very carefully where these projects will fall so that we can go as, as far as possible, um, I'll say definite in time being without a large expenditure in the form of bond assets.
Well, and I wasn't trying to be misleading about, you know, not funding the projects, but my point was that it takes so long to get them approved anyway. You know, and if we know we need to get them done, similar to the security vestibule, where's my security vestibule? You know, where is my whatever water booster system, whatever it might be? You know, yeah, we're gonna get it done, but if, if you now know you need that anyway, it's gonna take time to get approved. So you're gonna have to allocate the money at some point to it.
Right. I get what you're saying. Nonetheless, we know we're gonna have to get approval. We know that approval is gonna be held up, so it almost makes sense even if we, just to get the approval as soon as we can, we could go to hopefully that approach.
But we, we have to set the budget. Yeah, do, go with, do the option A, yeah.
So long faster and that way, when we do get approval, hopefully we'll be able to go through with it at a price that's less than-
I have to ask the accountant.
He's putting it off.
I didn't know if we can do that.
Cause what-
I don't know if we can get front-load projects.
Because what happens at the time of the prop, voter approval, the budget gets established for that project. So the money is taken out of that reserve. So that's why when you see into fund transfers, the, it goes up now because at the end of the year, those, like whatever you decide to transfer, that, that gets assigned to those, the budget gets established. And the money gets removed from the reserve.
But if we're playing the, the, the dollars and cents on this, right? And, and we kind of estimate that there's two million going in, right?
Right.
And technically, if we went with this one, it's one point five million coming out, correct?
Right.
Um, we're still in a, in a good place financially, no, on, on the, on the reserves for the, for more projects or?
It depends on-
On what we can put in.
No. I mean, my, my guess would be if, if option A were somewhere around option A's where you'd like to call three and a half million, we're not going to put that much back in. So this would be a debt, a debt reduction to our capital reserves.
And we're probably gonna not do two million this year. We're probably gonna be more like one and a quarter, one and a half.
I'd have to say, it's a tight year.
Right, so we're really talking about depleting by two million.
Right.
Kathy, if, suppose we went with option A and then the boiler fails at Woodhull, then what happens?
We'd have to do an emergency project.
And where would that money come from?
And that money comes out of either the general fund if we have the money. Um, and then I honestly don't know what, how that works with the reserve, that would have to be voter-approved.
Would have to be voter-approved.
Yeah. If we decided that we need to use the reserve money, then-
Districts have experienced this and actually having a conversation with the whole team of the JALI, from a very small district where they don't have a bunch of size. Ours, many fewer students, fewer buildings, the boiler length, they were basically putting spit and blue on it just to get it through the year until it could get the, the capital project approved. So it was, they were spending a lot of money consistently just to put Band-Aids on it. And that's a lot of districts who are in that position, 'cause you're talking about lots of buildings, maybe sixty years old at this point, and not just in this area or across the state. And they, you may not be in a position to put that money out there. You, you gotta just put that lesser, um, lesser cost Band-Aid on it so you can get the capital project and it ends up in the end costing a lot more.
So the bigger picture is, like you said, having Flanagan and Marcelino or whomever, you know, really work to address the situation where there's such a, a clog of getting approval.
But they can't. I mean, they're in the legislature and SEDs, right? So they can try and, or they can push.
Or, 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 like I said, whomever, but it seems to me that, you know, what'd you say, there's two people? It's, uh, how, that's ridiculous.
They was a gentleman who saw the office facilities planning that left there about a year ago. He was excellent. Uh, he actually left to be business official at, um, I believe it's a West Texas block school district for his own personal reasons. And what, since he has left, it is getting disreached.
But still, if you don't have it on your list, it's not approved.
It doesn't matter what happens at state. Because if you haven't, if you don't have voter approval, you can send it to the state.
As the voter approved, it's not available, I'm not gonna go through the queue.
So your option A was your most robust. Um, option B brought it down a little bit, traded out your parking lot for your boilers at Woodhull at three, uh, three million, one hundred and sixty thousand. And then your option C is your leanest. We need a roof, the two security vestibules, and in the Finley, we need to do that tile and seat replacement.
Can I ask a question about the interesting terminology used, trade out parking lot for boiler? Parking lot is never going to fail catastrophically, so you have to do something in the middle of the year.
Exactly. It's more as-
Or may.
Right.
So why wouldn't the boiler have been included upfront as a higher priority in the parking lot? You know, it was more of a, a luxury item.
Right. Because option A was more, um, do you want the voters to see more of what they're doing with the capital money? It's just a different way of looking at things, it's more aesthetic. All right? So they're seeing the parking lot, they're seeing this, they put in almost three point five million dollars, they don't see any work going on. But that's why I said it's a Chinese menu. So if, I mean, I honestly agree with you, boilers to me would be more of the hot topic because you need heat and you need-
I think they'll see it if their kids are cold.
That's why I said this is a Chinese menu. The price comes in very similar, you know, it's seven fifty versus eight hundred, so put the boiler over there.
I mentioned to you as, as a precursor to this presentation that there are three options here. We can adjust and put any list of projects together and approve that this evening if you so choose and that'll end up being-
Oh, yeah, I appreciate seeing all of them. I don't, I'm glad that you're telling us all of them.
Yeah, and mix and match. And, and again, when you come to the final slide, this is where, you know, I would say we don't have the flexibility. We need the roof, we need the two security vestibules.
Could the LGI be a little?
It could, we were talking about that today because we did just put the carpet in over all those tiles. We moved all the seats, storage came in on weekend and, and they worked and they covered all the tile. So we could probably get another year or two out of it before it got to a point where we really, it is a, is a full abatement.
I practice the boilers up there in the LGI.
Mm-hmm. And we can do that, mm-hmm.
Or we could do like what Bill said is put the boiler in and take the parking lot out.
Yep.
Well, I would defer-
But again, it depends on how much you wanna-
George, on, you know, not doing one versus the other, a full abatement can be pretty expensive too. What is your informed opinion as to which is more important in the short term?
Well, to me, if you, if you look at the LGI Finley, if we're, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it, we gotta remove the seats. The seats are identical to this. We're gonna take them off, they're gonna pull a lot and save on your seat. So that's why the price is where it is. Just to do the tile, maybe how we're gonna a hundred thousand dollars, but we know what's gonna happen. We're gonna put a hundred. The seating's gonna fall apart now, we can't refund the project. So it seems that we pull the whole project back and say we pull that along and move forward and do boilers instead of parking lot.
What priority between the parking lot at Woodhull and the LGI?
I think the LGI.
You think the LGI is more important than the parking lot?
Well, wait about the boilers. I was, I was asking about the criticality of the boiler.
I agree with the boilers, the parking lot and the LGI.
George, when did you put the carpeting down in the LGI?
I gotta say this-
Three, three weeks ago, month ago.
See, I kinda feel like if we just put in a Band-Aid fix in there, that, in my personal opinion, I feel like if we just did something to try and buy us some time, take that thing off, put something else on that, you know, we haven't kind of Band-Aided to fix. I certainly think the boilers should go back. We're just looking at option C and now thinking things to add to it. I would put the boilers back, but I wouldn't even think about replacing, you know, I, yeah. Of all the things that I've seen on the lists, Finley's, LGI, and I, I really do, I understand the need to replace. I've spent a lot of time with that opertory through the years, but that doesn't seem to be the same priority level to me as some of the other things that I saw.
Well, I think with the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just, did I miss something that why are we only talking about option C?
Oh, we're not.
No.
We're just, I just finally got down to option C.
Oh, no, it's, I'm really, the conversation's been around, okay, well, if we're gonna do this, let's do this and that. I don't think that's option A.
No, and I'm also saying swap things out for option A.
I thought we were talking about option A.
One of, one of the concerns about option A is not the list of projects, but the total on the budget.
The total.
That you have almost three point five million worth of, of costs there and in all likelihood, we're only gonna be able to put a, a piece of that back. So, and that's again, responsible budgeting, but that, that's the concern. This would be a year where much more-
Well, in looking at option, I'm sorry, Jim. In, in looking at option A, I mean, you have to do the roof replacement at Flower Hill. That sounds like, that's a must at this point, that you can't wait any longer on that one, the vestibules. You're gonna wanna put the security vestibules in at Flower Hill and Washington, get those approved. That's gonna get done. And after that, you know, you have, I mean, the LGI, uh, but you don't have the boiler. And I think that's what we're going back and forth on is, is billboard.
Right. And, you know, in hindsight, I could have flip-flopped it. Again, the, the Jefferson, the, the option A was the more aesthetic. Okay, that's why there's the options. So, you know, if I had to do it again, I'd switch. I'd put the, the boiler here and I would put the, what, parking lot there. You know, again, this is, it doesn't matter, you could do whatever you want with this.
I understand the aesthetics, but I also agree with Christine. And if a boiler, if it could, kids comfortable in school, it's, it's better.
I hear ya.
But then on Bill's point with the, with the abatement, I mean, that's, that's a viable concern with, with, I mean, I would think you would, you'd, you'd also wanna get that taken care of prior to becoming a bigger problem.
That's what option B would look like. Your, your roof, your two security vestibules, your boilers and your LGI.
Even though we put a Band-Aid, a Band-Aid on it, it still doesn't mean that it's not falling apart.
Has to be done eventually. So it's just pushing it forward to another year.
Option A, you're saying?
Yep.
So on option A, you could, you could take out the parking lot and put in the boilers, you're saying?
Yep.
I feel like I already forgot. George, you said, right, you said LGI over parking lot, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And then Jefferson, the tile replacement in the bathrooms is a small amount of money, but I mean, is that?
There are three faculty in two student bathrooms involved in that, in that process. Not that that changes anything, but just so you know specifically what we're addressing there. In Woodhull, it's all bathrooms, they're all classroom bathrooms. That's one place it's less.
And the situation is that they're cramped, they're-
These are, are lead abatements?
Yes. The, the grass, I'm led to, we have to choose it as a lead abatement.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the bathrooms, you know, three by five, it's just a little squishy bathroom. You gotta pay because it's a lead abatement. Unfortunately, we brought this out lead and we have to choose it, that way we can get our contract presented, trust the vice.
Gotcha.
Back to the bathrooms. How important do you feel the water booster system is? Because truthfully, how you were going through the things initially, to me, that's out of the way.
Well, Kathy, I'm sure it's affordable, but my, my personal, my honest opinion, you know, I think it can be done in house. I wish I can reduce that down to about two hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, that's great, just as a reminder.
No, but I, yeah.
We have to play water down to the top of.
And that, that's the worst here.
Yeah, and I think that we don't want a bathroom issue, but then it's gonna cost a lot on the cost.
Yeah. Next year, those offices will come out of classrooms.
Coming classrooms, yep.
Right, in the building, so.
Right. So where does that put us?
Well, wait, can I bring up one other point? I mean, we're, we're talking hard about what we're looking at putting up for a proposition for spending for this year for stuff, truthfully, that's not gonna happen for a couple of years. All right? So I am not at all concerned about the public perception per se, because the community, we've always done a pretty good job of explaining what we're doing, how we're trying to be responsible. And if your school doesn't have anything on the proposition this year, I don't think people vote no.
Right.
Okay, because of it. Um, my bigger concern is we saw, was it last year or the year before, the long-range plan on how all of the roofs need replacing? And that really, we were going to have a hard time doing all of them out of capital reserve. And so I guess, to me, that's a pretty important thing to keep up with. And if we're gonna knock off, you know, let's say a roof a year, if Mother Nature will allow us to go at that leisurely a pace, we might be able to contain it to capital reserve, even given the slowing rate of contribution. We're gonna get out of whack this year and for the next couple of years. So we're gonna burn down fast when we put in. So while I see all of the really cool and potentially useful things in option A, I am actually much more inclined to go with C and replace the tile with the boilers to allow us to be able to continue to look at a multi-year approach to getting the roofs done without having to go to bond to the community.
And that, that was sort of our, that was the conversation we had last year. That's the concern with an outlay of three point five million and, I mean, it's hard to, it's hard to project, but if it's a million and a half coming in, that's the cost of a roof.
Yep.
That differential. And, and again, we are trying like crazy to make sure, I'm watching what districts are doing. They're struggling with these bond issues, some are passing, some aren't. And those that are passing, I don't know if the taxpayers are completely aware of the impact of that until everything's all in place. So we pride ourselves on reducing debt to almost negligible levels at this point. And honestly, from a superintendent's perspective, I'd like to keep that going as long as we can while still being able to do the projects. And I think that's, that's what Bill is going to recommend.
Of the amount that you have listed, the eight point three, that's already accounted for those projects that aren't done?
Yes.
You've already, right. And that's just for public, I'm asking?
And, you know, in case somebody asks, what, what is the balance? You know, we had to make, that's, that's in two slides. I don't know if you wanna hop ahead, but that's, um, that's our balances right now.
So I hear, I hear what you're saying, Bill. I don't disagree, except that it sounds like the LGI is gonna have to be done within a year anyway, no?
It's been carpeted.
Right.
There has been some vacant work done there. Right now it is, it is, I'm gonna say, and George, correctly, I'm fairly confident that that's not an urgency. It needs to be done, but it's not as if boiler fails and we're, we're stuck.
Oh, I'm not saying it's out of the boiler. I'm already past the boiler.
You already, you already bought the boiler.
I'm already way past it.
She's already bought the boiler.
I don't think it's an absolute emergency. It's just something we will have to consider in the next couple of years.
What did we spend on the Finley carpeting and whatever?
We worked a half a bit, I think it forced me very much of dollars.
Oh, okay.
So it wasn't a big expense. So you developed the whole season contract. I worked with the vendor, I put the seating, I didn't have it done, and I had the seating, I could be possibly out with seating out. You may gotta make more sometimes.
So Bill, with, with what you had said and with everybody else's, to get everybody else's opinion on that, so we're looking, if we look at ca, uh, option C, adding, taking out the LGI and putting in the boiler, um, I would throw my two cents into that and, and only 'cause I've experienced the roll-up doors at the high school.
Yeah, I was thinking that one.
And I know the, uh, amount of airflow that goes through them. Um, it, I would, I would like to, to consider including that and, and potentially the Woodhull bathrooms. I mean, that's-
So add that in to-
Add that, yeah, that's a hundred and-
Can I speak for a second?
What's that bring our number, all right, Woodhull bathrooms are thirty?
We're talking about taking out the LGI, putting in the Woodhull boilers.
The boilers?
Eight hundred thousand.
Yes.
Stop by two.
Thirty-six thousand and the roll-up doors for a buck and a quarter.
Correct.
Buck and a quarter, so it's buck three.
About two.
Sounds like two point five.
Plus three hundred, three fifty.
It's about two point six million.
So it puts us-
About two six.
Two seven.
Two seven, call it. Round numbers.
So your point is that the one point, roughly, one point six, we'll need for a roof next year.
We'll see a gale.
It looks like, you'll have it, but if the pattern continues where you succeed for punishment, you're gonna run out before that eighth roof is done.
And when we hit the high school, that's a really expensive.
Right, the high school, we gotta do it in stages.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we've been.
That's a two, that's like two buildings.
Yeah.
That, that, I think, I got a estimate of price of about $3 million to do that roof. It's impossible.
Right.
You know, you gotta do that.
I don't like it, Tom, but you could sell me on 2.7.
What's that?
I don't like it, but I can, you could sell me on 2.7.
Well, wouldn't this bring us?
Well, I wanna hear everybody else's opinion, and that's just mine, I can, you know.
I'm actually with the bathroom.
Security, security.
The 2.7 includes the roll-up door replacement and the wood hole tiles?
Wood hole, yeah.
I'm the boiler.
And why, why would we say wood hole tiles, yes, and not Jefferson tiles? Why would we say yes to wood hole tiles and not Jefferson tiles?
Yeah, you're probably right.
The cost difference.
And not doing the booster doesn't mean the booster doesn't get done.
It's five bathrooms.
George is gonna work on it.
Correct.
Minus, we're taking out the six.
The water pressure for Jack, the booster?
Yeah.
Um, George is gonna look into seeing what he can do.
Get a Plan B.
To work on.
I think it's important, maybe.
Yeah, that, right. I'm worried the water's gonna get turned off. He said something about the water getting turned off.
That would be the multiple, 2, 2, 2,721,000.
I'm still checking that.
I'm okay with that, I would just add the Jefferson tile.
Please do check that.
Just another 65, because if we're doing that, and you said the Jefferson tiles, three faculty?
No, it's, it's, uh, two, two faculty bathrooms and one student bathroom.
It says five bathrooms.
No, it's three student.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it says it on the five-year plan.
Two bathrooms in the back, and two student bathrooms in the back.
At the same level of urgency as the wood hole bathrooms? Would you put them in a car?
No, it was just cosmetic now.
At Jefferson?
It's in the building now, both of them are cosmetic.
Oh, okay.
They aren't broken.
No, but you said something about lead. No, you can't just remove the, the tiles yourself.
That, that lead is there, but.
Right.
Okay.
Need to remove.
I thought there was a lead issue.
No.
No.
Oh, if it's just cosmetics? Then we'll wait for the teachers' contracts.
It's cosmetic at that point, it's all of us.
If you, if you put the other tiles in, it's 2.786, just short of 2.8.
Still the lowest option.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with putting.
It's better than 3.5.
Oh, yeah.
That's really what I'm looking at.
Yep.
2.7, 2.1.
2.786.
I was coming.
Adding both sets of tiles.
Highest first, and then.
Yeah, that's my, that's my opinion. I just don't wanna, I wanna make sure we save as much as we can for the roofs going forward.
So, you put in the, the three, five bathrooms at Jefferson and the 12 classroom bathrooms?
That is correct. So, it's 65,000, 36,000, 125, and then you take option A and you add 200,000 to make up for the difference of swapping out the LGI for the boilers.
Mm-hmm.
To, how old are our oldest buildings, roughly?
Sixty.
So, I'm not gonna disagree with what you guys all say, and I think that, um, and I know historically, we hear the word bond in this district, and everybody goes freaky and says, oh, no, we can't do that in Huntington. But we have old buildings, and I think that the reality is that maybe not this year, maybe not even next year, it won't be my decision, but I think there's gonna have to be a consideration to put out a bond. For not our fluffy things, for significant things that have to, we're not tearing down buildings and building random new, maybe they have buildings. So, if we want to sustain these buildings and have them run as efficiently as possible, we're gonna have to, you know, ask our community to understand that roofs are expensive, but we need that. Or you don't wanna have kids in the class.
I'll make, I'll make two comments there. First is, I don't disagree, but I think at this stage of the game, we'd like to go as far as we can and see if we can do this.
I'm not, I'm not arguing with you.
And the other issue, and I'll, I'll say it because I've never been to work, and believe it, it's something that we can manage here. I've watched other district bond issues go down because there was nothing in there that really appealed to the voters. So, if you just go with a bond that has roofs and boilers, there's, there's nothing there that, that really appeals. It's not a sexy project.
Yep.
There's nothing there that's gonna go up, you wanna say, hey, we really need that. And I've seen them go down, and it focuses specifically on legs, and I've seen them go down, and it focuses specifically on, on, on category Y. So, it may be on, it may go beyond just the infrastructure, and it's, and that, then the money is.
I'm just saying, I, I do think it's responsibility of the Board of Education to start to have those conversations publicly, just so that when the need comes, it isn't gonna be like, well, wait a minute, we don't do that here. Well, we might have to do that here.
Oh, no, I, and if you look at the numbers that we were presented, we can't do all of the roofs just out of capital reserve.
Oh, I know that.
Yeah, but, uh, yeah, I'm not ready to call Uncle yet.
I think it should be incorporated in the conversation, and there may be something that's a little sexy and that's also important and necessary, so.
Listen, and, and, and there, there is, that's, that's where it can be, but I tell you, you're absolutely right. At some point, we get to that.
The last bond that we put out to the community was for the track and field and the, and for the, um.
Auditorium and the gym.
Auditorium seats.
And the gym. Gym.
Gym seats also, which.
And I haven't thought of some gym operator as well.
Oh, I was gonna say, I, that, off the.
Hold the second.
Candles in the gymnasium.
Sound like Jerry Asher, Judge Asher.
Jerry's pushing for a second.
But it wasn't, it wasn't more type of, you know, bazillion dollar bond either. That was a very reasonably priced package, that's the community supported, and we're paid off at several times. So, I'm, I'm just saying that I think that that conversation needs to be had a little bit more frequently, so it's not something that's so like, ooh.
Surprise.
No, I, I don't, I'd like not to think that it's been, had moved, but just we've taken a lot of pride in, in reducing the debt service.
Yeah.
Now, now we're at a critical junction where, and we've talked about this, our building is 16, 16-plus years old, where the pieces, the major pieces of it are going to need replacement. The roofs are, 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 fine example of that, and that's not a cheap prospect.
Well, you wanna put yourself in a position where if you do need the bond, it's not catastrophic because you don't have 10 other debts to pay off.
And possible deflection, but that's what George mentioned, is Washington 1.2 something, or 1.5, 6. Same building, but. Come in 1.3, and we don't have the work to come in, you know?
Right. So, are, are we all agreed on those items that we came up with on the list?
Did we decide yes on the tile or no on the tile?
So, wait.
We said, we were saying yes on the tile, on both tiles.
We'll finish the presentation, and then we'll get to the capital props next for the agenda. And Mrs. Miranda will start making the conversation.
Thank you, Dr. Acker.
Yeah, very welcome. It's the first time I've heard that publicly. Yeah, he calls me Dracker.
I don't like that.
I think this came up not too long ago, just taking a look at, uh, it goes, well, uh, it goes back further than this, but just looking at 11, 12 to 16, 17 in terms of capital fund use and replenishment. We didn't include 17, 18 because we don't know what we're gonna replenish at this point. But, uh, you can see here that it's, in most years, it's fairly close, the scale's a little bit exaggerated, except for 12, 13, and 16, 17, where you see more funds in and out. Those are the years where the new capital reserve funds were voted through, that's what we see, particularly in 12, 13, and a little excess fund balance there, and we did have a new fund approved at that point. So, it's just a nice slide to look at, so you can see where the conversation today is gonna go, how much in, how much out. I do anticipate and promise it, maybe you'll be surprised, but I do believe that there will be more out and in based on the numbers that I'm hearing. And also, we did sacrifice last year, for example, there wasn't a huge fund balance. We put it all into capital, it was very little put out swims. So, there are other reserves that we've been contributing to, so this is not necessarily reflective of the total fund balance, but capital reserves are first and foremost consideration at the end of the year. Balances, the question came up earlier in the week, just to show us there, 8, 13, 17, 17 was just approved last year. And again, most of our fund balance went into 13 primarily, and the extra 672, 114, and 17 fund, which was just voted through last year. And this is important to note, that we're looking at a potential for three propositions on the ballot. These propositions have to be finalized very shortly, if not tonight. The 2018, 19 budget would be Prop 1. Prop 2 would be what we are discussing right now, what goes on that second proposition, what goes within that second proposition, all the projects that we pumped in the ring on the evening. And I'm also recommending, um, this came up, I had shared this report a couple of months, weeks ago, that the repair reserve was set up, and we've contributed 40,000 via general fund for eight, nine years at this point, maybe 10 years, for the replacement of the turf field. It's got about a 10-year lifespan. We cannot use the repair reserve for that. It's got to be, a repair reserve is for emergency repairs. It can't be something planned like the deterioration or depreciation of a turf field. So, what we've got to do there to make this audit-friendly is take that funding, which is already there, and move it from the repair reserve into a separate capital reserve. Now, why not put it into the 2017 reserve fund? If you look at the proposition, and I checked this with the attorneys, there is nothing specific enough in terms of what the monies would be used for, that really would be misleading for the taxpayers if, if we didn't do something like this. So, if you read the verbiage of proposition number three, it does show that, you pick the five-year term, 1.5 million over the life of five years, it's obviously a relatively small sum total over five years, but it's primarily there for taking repair and capturing it in capital, so when that useful life has expired, we can replace the turf field at that point.
So, that's just gonna become a lot of explaining that you'll be doing over and over again.
Over and over again. And it will be, it will be the 2018 Building Improvement Fund. This would, uh, obviously, it would've been cleaner to have done this last year and build the repair reserve in as a source, and the turf field as a potential use of, uh, potential recipient of the monies. Um, but again, we weren't really that close to the end life of that field, so it hit the radar last year. We looked at the repair reserve, and, and, you know, this was set up before we were here, and, and it was set up with the right intention, but we can't, you know, either things have changed or it's just something we need to adjust, or we need to.
So, when would we actually do the work?
I think we can get another, probably another year or two. Is that about like, that would be the separate reserve? And, and again, that, the money is there, it was responsibly put away over the years.
We come in at 500,000, and we have orange change in there. It's, it's at 10 now, or 10 years ago.
Are there requirements on naming those funds? Because it just seems to me it will be a lot more clear and transparent if we somehow name it Capital Field Replacement Fund, or something like that, to let the, the public know what we're doing. Because I think, seriously, if you call it, um, the, the 2018 Building Improvement Fund, they're gonna say, they're, they're, I, I just see a potential for confusion. That's, that's all. I don't know that it would happen.
If we can look into that, if there are going to be some restrictions there, but I don't.
That's why I asked, because I know, yeah.
I mean, something that, that differentiated would help, and as Barry mentioned, it would take a lot of explaining.
That's, and again, we're gonna have to do that, so if the, the fund name were a little bit more self-evident as to what we're doing, it makes the explanation that much easier. Oh, yeah, we're just setting up this fund because we're gonna transfer the repair funds in, then we can replace the turf. Really, truthfully, it's.
Is it statutorily established, you know, you, you repair reserves, repair reserve, here is reserve, here is reserve?
Right.
When you call our capital reserve the Building Improvement Fund, it's, it's worth a question.
That's, that's my only, I don't know if anyone else agrees, but I just.
Also known as.
All right, so that's it, just a reminder, upcoming budget sessions, and as the board knows, one of the reasons that we are putting the capital propositions in front of them tonight is the 26th is actually a workshop, they cannot approve anything formally then. So, if not approved tonight, more deliberation, we would actually have to go to a special meeting, and we've gotta get the legal notices into the paper, probably around the 21st or 22nd. April 9th, we push the revenue presentation back, in the hope that the state will put out its final budget by April 1st, option 16 regardless, budget hearing on the 7th, and vote in election on the 15th.
Did they give you any hints when you were with them in the weekend?
They did, Senator Marcelino did suggest that they were going to work through a village and get it put out by April 1st. You could say it'd be challenging, they hedged their bets teamingly, but, you know, we.
That'd allow her to buy a cup of coffee.
Listen, they did, they got, they got a very close downtown.
Not if you go to Starbucks.
Yeah, so great, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, thank you, Dr. Acker.
Thank you, Dr. Acker.
The new Dracker 5,000.
Emily, you'll speak to yourself, but she'll be back in a moment.
She's testing the water pressure.
Yeah, we both said that like in stereo, holy cow. Wow, you guys should go on the road.
Great minds.
Yeah, that's not what I was thinking, but okay.
Figured you weren't thinking.
All righty.
Oh, our audience has dwindled. We're driving away.
Our frown.
Phew, the proud.
Oh, you guys are really hanging in there. Just so you know, I just looked at my phone, though, and it says it's snowing all day. That's what my phone said, that it's already snowing.
Your phone doesn't know anything.
My phone knows plenty.
It's actually more on this side of the table than on the other side.
So, are we coming up with a?
Okay, so, where we are, um, where we are sitting right now in terms of. All right, well, I, I think we'd have to, I'm looking at resolution number two. The resolution is fairly generic. I think what we'd have to do is make a motion to include in the proposition the list of items that were discussed, so Mrs. Miranda can delineate them as we speak, so.
Okay. So, I need a motion to include in the capital, uh, what is it, the?
Resolution.
Capital resolution for the release of capital reserve funds, uh, the following projects. Roof replacement at Flower Hill Primary School, security vestibule at Flower Hill Primary School, security vestibule at Washington Primary School, boiler replacement at Woodhull Intermediate School, roll-up replacement doors at Huntington High School, tile replacements for classroom bathrooms at Woodhull, and tile replacements for three faculty, two student bathrooms at Jefferson.
Looking for motion?
And I need a motion.
That was well done.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have Jen, and we had Christine as a second. All in favor?
Any further discussion?
Oh, sorry, any further discussion?
I kinda, kinda pushed that one through. Anyone else have any other questions?
No, I think we all asked.
Well, good.
All right, good.
All in favor? That is everybody.
Okay. We got that? And I believe the total there is 2.786 million? That's what I got, plus some extra digits I didn't. And just, just to point out something that I didn't point out when we showed the balances. The reason we had allocated basically the balance of the 2008 reserve for projects in last year's, or in the current year's proposition, the reason there's still 300 and something thousand dollars in the 2008 reserve is some of those projects came in under cost, so that money gets reserved, uh, returned to the 28 prop, uh, 28 fund. In the current year's proposition, we would have the 385,000, whatever the number is, as part of the source of funding here. Gets un-earmarked, right? Un-earmarked is correct. Un-earmarked, de-earmarked?
It's late, Bill.
Counter-earmarked, we can.
Moving on.
Anti-earmarked. Okay, moving on.
No longer earmarked.
No longer earmarked.
Board Policy Number 5741.
Do you want like a word for it?
Drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers and other safety sensitive.
So did you get the resolutions?
I thought you were going to...
I thought we did a resolution.
No, no, the second resolution. Second resolution establishes the Capital Reserve Building Improvement Fund for five years, 1.5 million, primarily for the transfer from repair reserve for use in terms of turf field replacement. Now, we can motion that through, and then we just have to check on the name of that fund.
Okay.
Prior to preparing.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
The problem there is, we are, you're putting it on the table to approve with the title as written.
With that title as written, right? So, but we need to get it approved, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to hold it up for a name.
So I have a, I have a...
No, but I'd like to be able to look into that anyway.
Where does the title actually come from, though?
We've historically called our capital reserve fund Building Improvement.
Before we have a discussion, I'd like to get a motion.
I'll motion.
For approval of the Resolution for the 2018 Building Improvement Fund Establishment.
Motion. Thank you, sorry.
Second.
Barry and Christine, anybody have anything they want to discuss?
Why don't we call it grounds improvement instead of building improvement?
I don't know if we can do that. That's the, that's, that's, this is...
We're not sure that you can switch the name at all, actually, right?
It's more of a legality than anything else.
Yeah, if we're calling our capital reserve fund building, and this is going to serve in that capacity, I don't necessarily believe that we can change the...
So then the onus is just going to be on us to communicate exactly what it means.
Correct. Yeah.
And when I say us, I mean you.
I mean you.
Well, thank you very much.
But we can help.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Really? Don't get slap happy, people, stay on task.
The way we can count...
That takes us to Board Policy 5741, drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers.
Very timely, drug and alcohol testing.
Employees.
Okay, this is a second read. Hopefully, had a chance to take a look at these, if you so desire to do so. This policy has been adjusted to reflect current U.S. Department of Health and Human Services mandatory guidelines for federal drug testing programs.
So can I get a motion to approve the second read? Xavier and, was that Jen?
Yes, second.
Okay, anybody have any changes or discussion on that? All in favor? That is everyone.
Thank you very much.
Taking us to Board Policy 567D.
Okay, recalling from last week, also, in front of you is a final approval, second read. Revisions include clarifications, particularly because a lot of our records preservation are, it's now done through electronic means as opposed to fiche and paper, and there was a lot of repetitiveness and duplication between the policy and regulation that has been removed.
So can I get a...
I'll also mention that it also takes out the mandatory district clerk is the records access officer, because right now, Joanne is that appointed person, and I know Kim Zellman does a lot of that work with Joanne, so it gives us a little bit more flexibility, and the recommendation is actually, it doesn't have to be the district clerk.
Could I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Barry and Christine, anybody have any questions? All in favor? That's everybody. Moving on to Board Policy 7222, diploma or credential options for students with disabilities.
I recall, this is primarily addressing Zachary's Law, which we have already abided by here, even before the law was on the books, and that's allowing students who have a credential as opposed to a diploma to walk at the, during the high school graduation ceremony. And that's expressed in the verbiage there. So it could be a skills and achievement diploma, a credential, it could be a C-DAS credential, may not be a regional or local diploma. We've always allowed students in that situation to walk.
Yes, it should be.
But this formalizes it.
So could I get a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Christine, and a second.
Second. Oh, sorry.
Emily, anybody have any questions? All in favor? That is everyone. Board Policy Number 7313, also another second read, final read.
Suspension of Students. This primarily was altered to make sure that there are multiple documents in which the district advises students and parents about appeal rights, and there was also some verbiage put in related to students with disabilities and manifestations, and the implications of certain aspects of an individualized education plan.
So could I get a motion to approve Policy 7313, Suspension of Students?
Motion.
Barry and a second, look like Jen. Anybody have any questions?
Just one quick question. There's no reason to talk about restorative justice in this policy at all?
No, because the policy's really not designed for that specifically. It is reflected in our code of conduct. The piece of the code of conduct that addresses student suspensions, and again, we're trying to move away from that, as you know, that piece of it is, it is aligned with 7313.
Okay, that was my exact question.
Okay.
Good question.
So I have a motion and a second. There's no other questions, all in favor?
I'm not impressed.
That is everybody. Moving to Board Policy 7580, Dignity for All Students.
We've actually, we've actually approved and re-adopted and amended this policy several times, and it is an ever-changing focus of attention in school districts. The reporting has changed. There is now a separate VADER and DASA form that all of our principals complete at the end of the school year. That's reflected in this policy, and also broader access to Dignity Act Coordinator, which is Beth McCoy, contact, and DASA training for non-certificated personnel. You're approving the policy, but it's also important that you have a chance to see the changes in the regulations. There are two of them here as well.
So can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion. Go ahead, Mike.
Christine, and a second, is Emily. Anybody have any questions? All in favor? That is everybody. Moving to Board Policy Number 7582, Student Gender Identity.
And this, this is also a final read, but this is, this is a policy that is probably going to change over time as, as requirements and guidelines change. And it comes up at an interesting time, when the federal government is saying, "Well, we're not going to investigate these claims anymore," but the Attorney General and the State Education, State Education Department Commissioner are saying, "Well, no, 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 we put out guidelines that suggest otherwise, and you will follow them." This is in alignment with State Education Department and what the Attorney General is saying, we need to abide by. It takes into account, basically, the, the needs of students who are taking on various gender identities during the course of their K through 12 educational careers.
When you say Attorney General, I mean, State Attorney General.
State Attorney General, I'm sorry, yes.
I think that's really, really important in this case.
I absolutely apologize. It was a joint memorandum put out by Commissioner Elia and Attorney General Schneiderman, basically suggesting that, I don't care what the federal government says, this is what New York State schools are going to do, and that, this policy reflects that.
It's a very thoughtful policy.
So could I get a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Emily, and a second.
Second.
Jen, anybody have any questions?
I do. Why do we go out to define all these key terms? Are these terms that appear elsewhere in other policies or regulations? And I'm just curious, because I've never seen some of these described...
All of them are in the conversations around...
Most of them, if not all of them, are in that guidance document, and the...
What I'm saying is, within our own policy, that we need definitions for them to refer back to something that's within our policies. I understand that there's a memo out there. I'm just saying, like, when we have definitions, it's because we intend to use them within our own policy.
Or the regulations or the forms.
Right.
Correct. So that our policy aligns with the regulation, is that the reason why it's done here?
We don't have a regulation at this point, that's why.
Or any state guidance would refer using these terms.
Correct.
So, yeah, well, it'll not be a direct document, it might be another associated.
Because I don't see them reuse it anywhere else.
Right, but I think because they refer to the policy somewhere in here?
Doesn't. I just wonder if we're just, I understand why we're doing it, but I just wonder if we're doing it just to do it.
Well...
Definitions, you mean?
Right.
But the definitions are...
Is this going to change anything else?
No, I don't believe so, and I will tell you that, that this has, the key terms have been included here in two sets of Policy Draft Service recommendations, and also through the district attorneys that, that have, that have looked at this as well. Some of this might change over time, where the terms change and the way they're used changes. These are things that have come up, I can tell you, in practice here.
I think it's because the, I'm sorry, because the key terms here, the way it's spelled out, it's saying that these are, this is language that they would like the personnel to use. It's part, part of this policy is that we want staff to use these terms.
Maybe I misunderstood the question, but yes.
People who fit those definitions.
And recognizing that prior to the development of this policy, there may not have been a recognition or an awareness of these terms. You have to start with something so that if a child identifies in one of these areas that we actually know what we're talking about.
Yeah, and that is a common language to talk about it, too. Right, so that everybody's using the same terms to mean the same thing. Right, exactly, right. Just like with the security, when you spoke about that at the last board meeting, and you talked about having to come up with terms that, like a lockdown, as opposed to a, you know, what are the other terms are, right? Is that just... That everybody's using the same language. If everybody's using the same terms, it's helpful.
But these are actually, when you're talking about gender...
These are actually...
These are the terms.
These are the terms, and there are probably other terms as well, but these are...
There is, like, there's another one, gender fluidity. I don't see that there, but I don't really know that that's relevant to school policies, so.
And I think the important thing that Jim said is, this is probably going to be changing over and over again.
And as, as often happens, cases come up that are addressed either legally or practically, and policies are meant to be put back in front of the board as needed when those situations arise.
So anybody have any other questions or...
Was this wording pulled from a template from a policy service?
Yes.
It was. All right, so everyone in the state's going to have the same thing?
Very similar. I mean, we've, we've, we've changed some things based on some attorney suggestions, and there, there are two primary policy services throughout New York State. There's Erie One and NISP, and their, their suggestions were slightly different. We prefer to use Erie One for just a number of different reasons, but yes, the, the terms here are very closely connected.
Anybody else? Okay, so a motion and a second. All in favor? That is everyone.
Terrific, thank you.